May twenty fifth meeting of the rural county of the rural trustee meetings. We will start with the information items.
You go.
Okay, and we don't have a question yet, but we anticipate we will have one. So, Dr. Drum.
Thank you, Adam Chair. I want to welcome Alejandro, our new student trustee. And very involved with our student assembly and will make a great successor to Al who is great trustee. So big shoes to fill there, Alejandro. And it's going to be an exciting year. So another good year to be to be student trustee. I want to thank all the all the trustees for their continued volunteer effort on this on this board, particularly this past year. I know the kind of time it takes to go through the process that we almost conclude. Now we wait for the SUNY Board of Trustees.
We're just doing information facts first, children.
We need one more. No, we need one more. Oh, one more. Yeah, we need one more step. Okay. Sorry. Okay, a lot of good news this this time of year. More than for the last least handful of years. It's still early and we've got quite a ways to go to get to late August, but enrollment continues to be strong. We are currently eight percent up. And the further good news is this is well before any BATH numbers get into our, which will probably have an eight percent increase built in. Could be even more. The other one will fluctuate, you know, some between now and late August, but the BATH numbers generally have been pretty firm. This is a unique year, but so great, great trend for this time of year and the first time they've been up in several several years. Well, overall, we'll total on NFTs are up, so. Really, really pleased with that. And I want to thank our our enrollment management team. I don't know if Jesse's here. Jesse might be. He's just, oh, he's over there in the corner. I can't see him behind Alejandro. Alejandro's tall. They're sitting behind Vanessa, but our entire enrollment management team. They're really just on their toes all the time and it shows year after year when SUNY puts out the total enrollment numbers. I also want to thank our partners across the river at the Huntington University for their help and helping us to grow the wonderful BATH program. Thanks to those who were at commencement. What a what a great night. It wasn't a beautiful night. I think in my fourteen commencements, we've only had rain like twice. Thanks. Thanks. Thank God for that big overhang here at the at the arena when it when it does rain, but I think maybe only two. We've had to deal with the rain. So beautiful. Beautiful night for everybody. Seated by our scholarship and awards ceremony. This is just a crazy, busy season. Last Tuesday, we had our Frank Paul Medal Ceremony. This this past Tuesday. That's where, which is a kind of our final formal event of most years. Where we honor the top male and female STEM student from every high school in the region. It's unique in the nation that way, and they're all coming here. They're honored simply for their great academicness in STEM. We're out there, high school careers. It's a neat ceremony and great to meet those kids every year coming out of high schools. A few always come here. But the majority are going all over with their strong STEM backgrounds. That kind of wraps up our our work ceremony year. I want to thank maintenance and facilities. Taking a look at the campus as you've been on and off the this past spring, they've done such a beautiful job. Getting the campus in shape for the hundreds, if not maybe a couple thousand guests that we have this time of year coming to campus. Jonathan Arena and the Culinary and Event Center, you know, they do such a great job, and I really want to thank our our maintenance and facilities group for this. This is a tough, tough time of year. Wait for the cold weather to get behind us. The blossoms and all that, get our gardens in shape and what have you. They did a great job. So many events this time of year. I want to thank Justine D'Amio. I can't imagine she got any sleep for like the last month. Just one event after another, starting with our student engagement ceremony, a new student engagement ceremony that Carolyn Marques have instituted to recognize our top student leaders and athletes. And our mock wedding, our our mock disaster. Alumni Weekend, Open House, and then all of this year-end commencement-related ceremony, the pinings and everything that we're so fortunate to have. Justine coordinating all of that and keeping an awful lot of balls in the air this this time of year. Can't thank her enough for for her work. And also we're in back and forth between here and all the events at the Culinary and Event Center. You have a copy of my formal retirement letter at your seats. I sent it to Kathy a couple of days ago. Copied our HR office to to really formally kick off the retirement process for our HR office. And and also copied kind of executive. Garner. On that, and wanted to get that done before we get into into June. The all the short time after our June meeting. And then to end on a really high note, I'm sorry she isn't here. I want to congratulate our own our own chair, Kathy Connerton, who was recognized as the rural county distinguished citizen of the year on May tenth. What a great night it was. It was somewhere between five and six hundred people down in Dolce to to recognize her. Really well-deserved recognition. And that concludes my report, ma'am Chair.
College Assembly?
Hi, everybody. I'm Erin Marley, Staff Associate for Student Attention and the Chair of College Assembly. So this is a report since I was last year, last year in February. On the docket for review is a resolution for you all to request approval of the shared governance constitution. So I know you guys haven't been able to do that point yet, but I want to just formally thank you for reviewing that. And hopefully pending a positive approval of that. It's been a lot of a lot of good work this past year on that. So activity overview, as always, our spring semester, we had a year of horse matters. This semester, we didn't pick a specific topic. I'm just kind of kept it open for people to come up whatever they want to talk about. And it was a little bit quiet. So we we ended up coming up with some topics from the chairs. Our Council for Academic Issues Chair provided updates on the faculty council committee college of the library goes to. We talked about whether the new DEI learning outcome would have any impact on chessboard courses, and then there was the question about everything that started going on nationwide in Florida, banned books, DEI, all those things, how that might impact just sort of feelings around here. And then we're talking about doing banned book programming during the fall semester. As usual, information was shared from leadership about different partnerships with major university, BTP programs, updates on the budget, student activities, athletics. I'm just kind of keeping the caps informed on those things. And big focus this past whole year was talking about the shared governance restructure updates to pending constitution approval. Will be again moving from a four-body structure to a three-body structure will help hopefully be more effective in our in our shared governance. Campus voting results, we voted to approve a few different areas related to shared governance, the recommendations for restructure, the constitutions which you guys have. And then a couple of resolutions that came through after we'll see, we're going to approve to endorse one of them. And then we unfortunately denied endorsement of a second one related to inclusive access. And I think that was mostly due to not having a a full body to have enough votes for approval. So that information was all sent to the FCCC. And then for planning for twenty-three, twenty-four, we'll be working a lot this summer as much as we can with transition into, you know, potentially the new shared governance restructured, because we'll have to have new chairs and then do voting for new membership. So it'll be a busy summer and fall when everything in place. And that can put that apart. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Erin.
Okay, thank you.
You know, we just started with the information items, which we didn't have a form, so.
Yeah, we did.
I apologize.
Now they have a form, go back to the top.
Oh, okay. All right. I did call. Got me bouncing here. Two point O is. I told you I was. I have to, no, keep coaching. All right. Approval of one point one approval of meeting April twentieth for trustee meeting. Do I have a motion? Anthony, second. Tina, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry. One point two, May twelfth. For trustee special meeting. Motion. Move it. Margaret, second, Jim. All in favor? Motion carry. All right. F and F. All action items were approved. It was you know, held this week and everything went through as planned.
She's going for your records though, Anthony and Jim. It's cracking the time of the meeting.
Twenty-five minutes.
That's almost twenty, yeah, twenty-four minutes, actually. So she's got a ways to go.
What's the record?
Eight minutes.
And that I'm sure you.
Jim, Jim ends. We had nothing on the agents.
That's a huge agenda.
Preferred agenda. Three point one. Recommend acceptance of Pepper Perkins funds for academic year twenty-three to twenty-four.
No papers preferred. They're all together. This is the preferred agenda. So they all go in one fell swoop. Unless somebody wants to pull one.
Well, I'm going to abstain on three point six.
You can pull can pull three point six separately.
Yeah.
So we can vote on the.
Yeah, you have to vote on that.
Do we have to vote on each one now individual or just?
Just pull that one out.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. All right, we're totally, okay. We will be voting on three point one, three point two, three point three, three point four, three point five, three point seven, three point eight, three point nine. Twenty-one. Second. Margaret, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carry. All right, three point six. Recommend, I feel like I'm screaming.
Well, we can only get five votes, so. No. He couldn't involve. He can vote.
You are being. Jim Morbin is abstaining. Case SUNY from students that are HVAC replacement electrical construct. All right, motion. Nina? Second. Second, Margaret. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. You know, I just have to make labor was easier than this. All right, action items. Recommend approval of the resolution to request approval of the shared governance. Anthony. Second, Alejandro. All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carry. Recommend this approval of the new AA four zero one zero grading scale policy. Oh, but Margaret, move second. We have a second.
Second.
James.
Jim, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion approved. Excuse me. Recommend approval of new AA four oh one one facility led travel policy. Faculty policy. I'll move it. Margaret?
Second.
Jim, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Four point four, recommend approval of new SS eight zero zero five Brown's policy. Motion.
I'll look into that.
Jim, second, Alejandro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the opposition? Motion carry. All right. Now we're going back to information items. Student affair, Dr. Ross.
Hi, you all have the the monthly report on the activities of the division, so you can read that at your leisure. One of the things that I want to share that's not in the report is from June the fifth to the eleventh. We'll be hosting students from Mexico, the University of Solea in collaboration with the anthropology class, which is pretty nice. So that will be exciting for the campus. They'll be staying in the in the residence halls. The other thing before Vanessa shares about the education opportunities program. Just to bring everybody up to date on where we are with the childcare center. After all the excitement with regards to the center, we will be as you should be aware, the center will operate for the next academic year like it has this year. No changes in operations. However, we will be convening a task force of about nine or ten people to help us really look at the infrastructure of the childcare center, everything from its accreditation to staffing to an enrollment management plan. Because the center has an average of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss. It's been managing that with the support of the college for the past seven years. And so we need to move in another direction to ensure sustainability. There are people from the community that are part of the task force as well as individuals, needless to say, from the campus. Barb and I will be co-chairing the task force and we will share information. The goal is to have sub-working groups, subcommittees of the task force to work on various areas. Bring that information back to the task force, will make some decisions. Make some bigger recommendations to the FSA board because the childcare center is an auxiliary program which operates through FSA with recommendations that come back to this this board. So, yes.
I was surprised that there were fifteen non-affiliated kids in there. As opposed to, you know, and not students or faculty or staff children. That's a lot. I think it's almost half.
Yes, and so that that is part of the enrollment management plan that we need to look at. But you know that people who non-students are full pay. Which, you know, helps, but.
You like that? Yeah, okay.
So we'll be looking at that as well. The center can max out at forty-two. And they're broken down into infant toddler and pre-K classrooms. We can take at this juncture eight infants, which was the the major concern about having to close the classrooms.
Dr. Ross and I did have a conversation and I sent you an email. Anthony Panichia is going to be on the committee. Did you get that?
Did it come today?
No.
Oh, oh, yes.
Okay, all right. So and we will be meeting shortly.
June, June the first is our first task force meeting. But we will, we'll make sure that we keep the board informed.
Thank you.
One before Vanessa. Want to introduce Vanessa, who's the Director of EOP. The EOP is one of the programs that is very, very important to the college. Its role is to work with at-risk, what are considered at-risk students to provide an extra kind of support, not only financial support, but the intrusive intervention. Which is something that the division does for a variety of cohorts. But the EOP program, I think, is our most famous one. And so I wanted everybody to meet Vanessa. It is comprised of about eighty students? Eighty-three students. Students, Vanessa will explain everything, but we start with a summer program, so Vanessa.
Hi, folks. So I actually have a formal presentation because why not? At least you can look at some pretty pictures and I have a video as part of it. Before I speak to an audience about EOP, I always like to gauge how many of you have heard of the program. If I show hands. Okay, so that's good. Hopefully I will worry to tears, you know, what what I'm about to talk to you about. Well, that's fancy. Okay, here we go. So, EOP is a New York State legislative program. It started over fifty-five years in the state of New York. It's got a storied legacy in the state of New York. We've been in existence for over fifty-five years. It's pretty awesome. Currently, we serve statewide over nine thousand students at fifty-four student campuses. So we're not on every campus, but we're on most. And then there we've had over eighty thousand graduates. Um, and in there, we've had over eighty thousand graduates in, uh, the fifty-five years of our existence. Some of them are famous, as you can see at the bottom of your screen, uh, this young man over here, Winston Duke, who played in Baku in the Marvel, uh, series. Um, Black, Black Panther, um, Sonny Howson, who's a famous, uh. Uh, talk show host, Hal Roper, and Weather Guy, and then our very own SUNY Broom EOP alum, Leo Webb, uh, who's our student center. So what do we do? We provide wraparound academic, personal, and financial support to students who are academically and economically disadvantaged. We define that based on their GPA and based on, uh, uh, their, an economic chart, which I'm gonna actually show you. Cause I think it's sobering to see, um, some of you may have come from a, a background where your, your family's economic situation is reflected in this chart. Now, I just have to figure out. Actually, uh, Diana, are you able to flip on Mr. Me? Thank you. And if you can scroll down. That's the chart. So if a student is in a family of four, their family income can be no more than fifty-one, three, three, eight. If it's over that, then they're not eligible for EOP. Right, so that's the, that's the level of disadvantagement we're talking about when we say economic disadvantage. Thank you. Um, so what we do again is provide that, uh, wraparound support. Our students know from the beginning of their relationship with us that we expect to see their face often in our office. So we, we employ an intrusive model, um, with them. Um, we work with them, uh, we have an EOP counselor, uh, who worked with them to guide them through. Um, their academic experience on campus, um, so EOP counselors have to kind of be jack-of-all-trades, right? We know about financial aid, and we know about the registration process, we know about academic advising, right? Um, so, uh, we know about career stuff, right, um, transfer stuff, um, that doesn't mean we know everything. We work with a lot of our campus constituents to make sure that our students are, um, given the accurate support that they need. But we, we do provide a one-stop shop for them. Um, in addition to that, uh, we, we have a learning specialist who works with our students, who does academic, not academic, but she does her, the time management plans with them. Each one of them has a time management plan and study plans, um, so we are very involved in what they do. And when they're not doing the right thing, we're involved in that as well, and trying to get them back on track. Um, EOP is a transferable program. Um, so if you start out as an EOP student, wherever you are in the state of New York as a college student, you can transfer to another school as an EOP student. So once EOP, always EOP. The opposite is true as well, if a student starts at SUNY Broom or wherever they're starting. A- as an, as a non-EOP student, they can't change their mind later. So it's really important that students get in from the, um, the beginning, because they can't turn around and say, oh, never mind, I want to be an EOP student. And then somebody like me has to say, sorry, no. Um, our support and helping our students transition to, uh, college starts with our EOP Summer Advancement Academy. It's a four-week program on campus, our students come from all over the state of New York. Some from our local communities, some from downstate, they all live on campus with us for four weeks. Some of our local students really don't like that, but they end up, a lot, a, a pretty good portion of them end up wanting to live on campus after they have the experience, so. Um, they kick and scream on their way there, but they get over themselves pretty quickly. Uh, while they're on campus with us, they're taking two developmental courses, a math class and a writing class. Uh, those courses are specifically designed by math and writing faculty on our campus. To help them, um, get prepared for the academic rigor that it, that they will experience in the fall. Um, they get to know the campus like the back of their hand, they get to know all the resources of the campus, Dr. Drum even gets to meet with them and has met with them. Um, the whole, uh, pretty much everybody on campus gets to meet with our students during the summer. Um, in addition to that, they get to know each other and they get to build what we call our EOP family. That's super important to them, it's super important to us, we intentionally facilitate that with them. So they come in as, as strangers and individuals and they leave as a, a family and an entity. Um, and I've seen students really support each other in meaningful and beautiful ways throughout the year, um, that they're in the program. So, we're funded to serve eighty-three students, but this year we served seventy-three, so we're a little under-enrolled. Um, fifty-five percent of our, well, I should say, we have a very diverse student population, and this is the demographic breakdown of that. You can see some of the pictures of our kids. From our summer program. Okay, um, I am a huge believer in representation being very important. And I believe a staff should reflect the student population of which they serve. And so, um, when we're looking to hire for, uh, people within our program, we're, we're intentional about. Making sure that the students are gonna find people who look like them when they come into our office, and we've been very successful in doing that. Uh, so this is the demographic breakdown of our staff. Uh, a little side note, I am proud to say that one hundred percent of my staff is EOP, including myself. I was an H EOP student, graduate from Colgate University, um, Josh, our EOP counselor, is a SUNY, graduate from Portland. Brianna came from, um, SUNY Buffalo, or Buffalo State. And then, oh, Kelly, we can't see because her face is being blocked out here, she's our secretary, whose birthday was today. Um, she is a SUNY Broom graduate, EOP graduate from SUNY Broom, so we are one hundred percent EOP. This, these folks down here, uh, were our EOP Summer Advancement Academy staff, uh, peer mentors last year. So we also try to hire EOP students to do those jobs during the summer. These are some statistics to show you how we do in the program. Our fall to, uh, spring retention for this past summer's, uh, cohort was ninety-six percent from fall-spring. Um, we have a fall-to-fall retention of seventy-three percent from last year's cohort. Um. As I mentioned, the, the students take two classes in the summer, one of them being a writing and one of them being a math class. Seventy-seven percent of the EOP freshmen who took college-level math in the fall earned a C or better. And so that we made, we're very intentional about when they take those math courses, whatever, wherever they place, they're taking it in the fall. So they don't lose the learning that they just acquired over the summer. And it's, we're getting great results. Okay. And I just have some more. Good news to share real quick. Vote down. Okay, ten of our students earned scholarships from our foundation this year. Fifteen percent, fifteen of our students earned Academic Excellence Awards from SUNY Office of Opportunity Programs. Those certificates are special in that the chancellor signs them. Uh, four of our students received SUNY Broom Leadership Awards this year, four members of the Student Assembly were EOP students, including the President and the Chief of Staff. Two EOP students serves, served as RAs this academic year. One of our EOP students was given the Faculty, uh, Math Award this spring, it's the first time that's ever happened. Uh, twelve of our students have graduated or will, um, have graduated this year. And many of them are transferring to colleges like SUNY Purchase, Bennington University, Old Westbury, Empire State. Albany University, University of Buffalo, and SUNY Portland. And these are some of our beautiful students, some of the awards that they've gotten. Hopefully this works, I do have a video that I'm gonna end with, these are the students, um, and they're, I'll let them tell you in their own voice how they feel about the program. Hopefully this works.
Uh, my name is Franklin Arugor, and I'm currently attending SUNY Broom. Majoring in computer information systems. And I will be graduating this spring. Thanks after graduation is transferring to a four-year school, I've gotten accepted to them, but, um. I made a decision on going pursuing, um, SUNY Albany and getting my bachelor's in cybersecurity. But say I'm student leader as far as helping my fellow EOP students in their computer science courses. Um, me coming into SUNY Broom, the courses were very rigorous. And it's tough to manage all the labs, you have to, and time management plays a big role. And I was able to meet with many of my EOP family, one-on-one, to give them the tips that helped me. Strive and better my classes. I also have a part-time job as a school bus driver in the Bennington City School District. But enough about me, let's talk about the, uh, great, um, SUNY Broom EOP program. Um, as far as helping me, um, moving into my college journey, it's been amazing. Uh, my EOP counselor, Josh, he has been able to give me the valuable resources I needed in order to. Get better grades as far as, um, tutoring, um, scheduling my classes. Um, giving me, uh, life advice in general. Pointing me to the right direction when he didn't have the answers. And he also gave me, uh, guidance on my career aspirations as far as, uh, computer science and me transferring. Uh, to a four-year school and. He just helped me navigate the challenges that came with, uh. Being a EOP student and attending college in general. Overall, I'm grateful for the support and resources that SUNY Broom EOP has given me. Um, without them, I wouldn't be where I am today. And I'm just excited to see where my future takes me, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my story.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Pudge, my major is liberal arts and science, I started here in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, and I'll be finishing in fall twenty-three. Um, my goal is to attend SUNY Broom, is to go transfer to SUNY O'Nantucket, and I will go to get my master's degree in school chemistry. Currently, right now, I'm one of the RAs in the home, but I'm also in state government, as opposed to, as in SUNY Broom, this is the fall of twenty-one. And I'm getting my, my way up to achieve the staff position that I currently need right now. EOP has helped me to expand my career throughout my experience here at college, and I wouldn't know where I'd be without it. It has shown me so many ways to help achieve my goals inside and outside of the classroom. It just showed me nothing but support in all aspects of my life, to make sure I stay on my path to success. If it wasn't for EOP, I don't know if I would still be in college without the support, the amazing, everybody that has helped me. With the tutoring, to the advisors.
Hello, everyone, my name is Deborah Martin, I am originally from the Dominican Republic. I am the first one of my family to graduate from college. I graduated from SUNY Broom Community College in two thousand and nineteen with a associate and a legal art. With the support and the help of EOP, I was able to transfer to Bennington University. Where I was able to graduate with a bachelor's degree in human development. EOP embraced me, supported me. And empowered me to my career, I am confident that EOP will do the same for all the students. Thank you, and best luck.
Hello, my name is Leon, I'm a first-year student at SUNY Broom, and I'm currently majoring in health sciences. I plan to make it into the SUNY Broom program before pursuing my, my Ph.D. license. Um, I currently work at an aid, at UHS here in Bennington, um, as well as school. Um, I remember of the EOP program, and I'm very grateful. Um, I would just like to start off by saying that before coming to SUNY Broom, I did not have a traditional education. I did not go to high school, and, um, I actually ended up getting on a, a juvenile student diploma. Um, this caused me to have a lot of gaps in my education. Um, it caused me to doubt myself in a lot of ways, and it caused me to not believe in my academic abilities. Um, coming into college with that headspace made it seem very overwhelming and. It made it hard for me to think that I could do what I jumped into maybe. Um, thankfully, I was accepted to the EOP program, and I attended the summer enrichment program. Um, during the summer enrichment program, I just provided countless resources, I was provided with so much. Um, not only my counselor, but also, um, my mentors. And I would say the main thing that the EOP program has taught me is that there are so many people. Who get their education so well in life, that come from so many different backgrounds. And it's all about believing in yourself and believing in your academic abilities. Um, the EOP program has really taught me that I am not alone in my non-traditional schooling. Um, there's, I've met so many people in the EOP program who have not had a traditional way schooling. Or who have not started off on the right foot, let's say, when having a college education. Um, and I watched, um, myself and the people I've met in the EOP program grow. To be able to receive a college education. The EOP program has. Again, like I said, gave me countless resources such as, um, how to financial aid. Um, any questions I have regarding my schedule or how to work while getting an education. Um, family issues, everything, I know there's always my counselor is there, um, mentors. And I am so thankful to be a part of the EOP program.
So, thank you for your time, I don't know if you have any questions for me, I know that was probably a little longer than. Maybe you anticipated, but it's hard to tell the story of this program without taking the time, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Student Affairs, Student Assembly update, Alejandro.
Hello, everyone.
And welcome.
Yeah, I'm Alana Chau, yeah, Don Silas, and I was selected as a student trustee. Uh, a few weeks ago, and then I signed my oath this week. I'm really excited to be here, I'm really passionate about students and the opportunities that we receive when we. Pursue education, and hopefully I can be a great voice in the, the board and work with everyone. And so, something that I would tell you guys to know is that. The student body elected new, a new executive board and new senators for this upcoming. Year for the student assembly. We're really excited, everyone is very passionate about what we're doing, and everyone who's elected for, except for. One person does have experience in, in student assembly, so it's gonna be a great year. And also, the student body also wanted to approve an amended constitution that better reflects the roles and responsibilities of student assembly members, so. That is just to help the assembly work better, and so that, uh, things are set in stone. And we're really happy because voting for student assembly increased this year by three times. We, we still need more students to vote, but it's a three ti- uh, three times increase, so really excited about that. And we, uh, the assembly is also just waiting for Executive Council. To update us on issues that the assembly has been dealing with, with the communication. And I, I appreciate the help from the Executive Council. And if you guys have any questions, uh, tell me my report.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, my report's in the packet, um, there's a lot of detail in there, I'll just give you a couple of highlights. Um, as of March twenty twenty-three, the foundation's total investment portfolio was forty point one million dollars, of which thirty-nine million is in doubt. The foundation's total assets were forty-five point one million, including the beneficial interest in perpetual trusts. Compared to the fiscal year-end, June thirty, twenty twenty-two, with total assets of forty-three point one. The foundation had a net surplus year-to-date through March of two point six two million dollars. The, contributing to this was a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar state gift and realized and unrealized gains of over two million dollars. Total dollars raised so far from July one, twenty twenty-two through last week is one point eight seven million dollars. And, um, this, we're having a strong fundraising year, we're also doing some recovery in the markets a little bit. Um, and, uh, things are going rather well in the financial end. Um, the alumni magazine came out, uh, you all got it, and, uh, likely, uh. Uh, saw the feature of Dr. Drum on cover, we got a lot of nice feedback and. Um, had some great profiles for alumni, current faculty, and students. One of whom is our brand new student trustee. We recently hosted, uh, Alumni Reunion, April twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. Had, um, very good attendance on Friday night at the CEC. Uh, we had nearly ninety attendees, um, who came to, uh, they were alumni or, uh, retired faculty, current faculty. And it was a nice evening, and Saturday, we had a number of events, many of which you've heard about. Um, including the, uh, baseball field dedication, where our department did the athletics department. And the family of Edwin Seadog, who came to sign for that dedication. Um, we're currently. We're currently expecting, I was notified that we're going to get two requests from community friends, totally nearly $50,000 shortly, which we're not expecting. Sometimes that just happens, and it's a nice surprise when it does that people remember SUNY Broom, and they're not alumni, but they live in this community and have supported us for years. So that's great. Dr. Drum didn't mention about the Frank Paul ceremony. I just wanted to tell you, we had 19 schools, including, brand new this year, Teoga Central School. And there's 38 students, and six of those students have already committed to come to Broom and four got Frank Paul scholarships as incoming students. And if they maintain qualification, they'll keep those scholarships as continuing. And if they transfer onto a four-year school in engineering science, they will also get the transfer portion. So it's a nice package. Just wanted to tell you kind of something a little bit interesting. And so about five weeks ago, we get people who make inquiries or call us up and tell us they'd like to donate something in kind. And I kid you not, in five days, we have three calls for people who wanted to donate pianos. Unfortunately, we can only accept what the music department and/or campus folks determine that we can currently use. And so we did select one of those, and it is a mint brand piano, an electric version that we will be getting shortly. And thanks to Brenda Daw and the folks in our music department, it's a really nice new piano that our program is going to have. If there's no other questions, I just wanted to thank out publicly. It's been just been amazing. Student trustee, also a volunteer for the Foundation. And, you know, she'll give Alejandro some shoes to fill, but we're confident. I have a funny feeling we're going to continue to see them. So we just really enjoyed the opportunity to be able to partner with her all through her time here, and she's been a wonderful volunteer.
Thank you. Michael, 5.7.
So I'll just refer.
David's not here.
Yeah, I'll refer to Libin Babu, who is kind of the assistant to Dave, and he'll give a brief update on facilities.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. I'm Libin Babu, and the Assistant Director of Facilities. So I'll quickly highlight the report, the highlights of the report. Construction of the new fitness hall has been completed, and we anticipate one cutting slash wall stage sometime early September once the classes are resumed. Construction of our third pavilion has been completed. All the three pavilions have been furnished with new furniture, and we are in the process of installing solar lighting to enhance safety of the pavilions. Out of the four contracts for the student services and old science research project, electric and electric contracts have been finalized. We are still awaiting the plumbing and general contracts. Once we have all the four contracts, we'll expect, you know, we can start meeting the contractors and the architect to begin construction. Also, a request for proposal was advertised for the old science student union conversion project. We had the one on the 17th of May, and we had a lot of interest. In fact, seven architectural firms were on site. And the proposals that we own, the 30th, and we are hoping to have some proposals. Work also continues on the RFP for the reengineering of the library. We expect this RFP to be advertised in early June. We have the bid opening for the student center best gym HVAC replacement on the 11th of May. We received two successful bids, both with good numbers. Construction contracts will be processed once the bidding has been received. If you remember, we had a significant damage to our electrical system on Thanksgiving Day. Those returns will be made the Saturday. We have to take them forward to the entire campus on the 7 AM, 1:00 7:00. The Deco Nursing renovation project continues to move ahead. Actually, we had a good meeting today with the architect and the construction manager. So we will give you all the floor plans. Our construction managers working on cost estimates, and we are hoping to have a detailed cost estimate for the next senior company meeting. We have the bowling projects in the pipeline, relocation of art studio to the library and renovation of the testing center. Electric vehicle garage in old signs, evaluation of waste building for one staff shop. Mini little figure configuration to create a more flexible tri-purpose space. Campus-wide signage upgrades, decker, cooling tower, ancillary placement, academic and athletic space renovation of the student center. That concludes my report. Thank you. And I'm very happy to answer any questions.
Okay. 5.7, Michael.
Thank you. So just so you can tell, we probably have about $15 to $20 million worth of capital projects that either have been approved or are in progress to be planned and then submitted to both the county as well as to SUNY over the next couple of years. So we have a tremendous amount of time and energy around capital projects. So in your packet is the monthly budget forecast. It's the same as what it's been for the last several months. Again, we're projecting, needing about $3.8 million of federal stimulus, HERF funding. That will leave, if that forecast is reasonably accurate, about in next year's budget that the board approved in April, about $2.4 million, which will then leave about a half a million for 2024, 2025. Speaking of HERF funding, all of the HERF funding, phase one, two, and three, both the student pot and the institutional, which is the college pot, has all been spent. We just drew the last amount for some expenditures in the mental health area. So the deadline to get everything in is June 30th. So I think we'll be well ahead of that target. So that's around our current year's budget. College had a meeting with, after the board approved the budget in April, the college, along with the board officers, Dr. Drum, Dr. Kelly, and myself, had a meeting with the county executive, and his team reviewed the proposed budget for next year as well as the presentation that was provided to the board in April around the multi-year financial sustainability plan. Also covered a couple of, a couple of major capital projects, inclusive of the decker renovation, not only the nursing expansion, but radiology and dental, being a couple of other major projects that we've submitted to the county. In addition, another major project we've submitted to the county is some major improvements to the interior of the library. We've already done quite a bit on the exterior. HVAC has been replaced, and the roof has been replaced, some exterior modifications. But it's a highly used building, and it needs some upgrades and improvements. So might be a multi-year, multi-phase project like nursing, depending on what the capacity is of the county to support. Not only those two major projects, but several, several others. Just, again, this is an affiliate that is ultimately responsible, Housing Corporation. But we are getting close to going out and refinancing the village. We'll be developing a pretty comprehensive packet to submit to Moody's Investor Service. We're really hoping to get investment-grade rating, which would be a B or higher. That gives you a lot more opportunity in the marketplace. So we anticipate doing that over the next, probably 60, maybe on the outside, 90 days. So that's going to be a major stabilization of village. And we hope to get good rates and go long-term, go 30 years with the village going forward. So more updates, it's really housing's board responsibility. But certainly, the college board plays an important, important role in supporting the housing operations. And just finally, also on the daycare matter, we, college finance and budget have, have been spending a lot of time reviewing that. We will come back in June with, you know, as you know, on the county budget side. So we present it to the county exec May 1. County exec then makes a determination by the end of May as to what he'll recommend for the sponsor share. And then it will go to the Broom County Legislature for review by their education committee and their Ways and Means Committee during the first couple of weeks of June and make a final determination on sponsor share. We come back to the board in June to finalize the budget based on what sponsor share amount is. Then we'll have a resolution in great detail for the tuition rates, other fees and charges. So at that June meeting, we will have a recommendation to the board around some additional revenues to support, at least for the, for the, for the year that task force is taking a look at it. We will provide a plan to ensure that daycare continues as it currently is operating for at least another year. And that concludes my report. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Good question. Thank you. 5.8, send in the packets for informational purposes. 5.9, media report, Jess.
Standard reports. Lots of links, though. Busy, timely year.
Thank you. Okay. Including the business, and then I'm going to make, we're going to go into executive session. Well.
We are.
Yeah. Oh, we're there.
Gym meeting.
Yes, this is the.
Yeah, part approval.
Okay. So I want to take a moment to get into the session. Second.
Second.
Anthony. All right. We will, I have a point or go. Do we, so people are going to have to come back? Do we come out and then adjourn the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, but all right.